Thank you for being here. Welcome to the special meeting of Sedgwick County Commission. Call to order on Friday, March 20th. Those of you on KPTS and YouTube Live, appreciate you tuning in. So with that, welcome. Thank you, Commissioners, for being available to have a special meeting on this Friday. So we will call to order in the order of business. Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present.
Madam Clerk, next item.
New business, Item A, COVID-19 in County Operations Discussion.
Thank you. And Tom Stoltz, thank you for being here to show us what you have.
Morning Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stoltz, County Manager. We have three things to cover today. I want to have us hear from Ellen House with the District Courts, Sheriff Easter or Colonel Pollak from the Sheriff's Department to kind of talk about how the courts and the jail system are operating during this time. Then I will come back to the podium and I will present to you a potential plan of action for courthouse operations over the next few weeks. And then we'll finish by Mike Fessinger from the Law Department talking about a federal funding bill which has been voted on and how it could and will impact treatment of employees in county operations. So with that, we'll let Ellen start and we'll get to that.
Thank you, Tom. And good morning, Ellen.
Good morning.
Thanks for your hard work you're doing.
It's a team effort.
Oh, there you go.
Good morning, Commissioners, Ellen House, District Court Administrator. As I'm sure you're aware, the Supreme Court of Kansas issued Administrative Order 2020-PR-016 on March 18th. And what that does is it's an order imposing statewide judiciary restricted operations due to the COVID-19 emergency. This order greatly restricts the hearings and the operations of the District Court. It limits, I don't know if you've seen the order or not.
Well, I think we had it sent to us, but I'm not sure. If you can reference, give us the highlights.
There are very few things that are ordered to...
Ellen, can you tell us the number of the court order again?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
It's 2020-PR-016.
-016.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For example, in criminal, the only things that really will occur with, especially with the public, are first appearances and then also PFA, PFSs are still allowed to be filed. We will not be having PFA, PFS hearings, but we will be issuing emergency orders that will be effective until the court reopens. They will still be able to issue warrants, they'll still be able to set appearance bonds and conditions of release, and issue warrants for wiretaps and inquisition, inquisitions, excuse me, and juvenile offender out of the juvenile courthouse. They will still be conducting juvenile detention hearings and they will be issuing warrants for juvenile offenders. They will also be handling commitments of sexually violent predators and temporary orders with mental illness cases. Child in need of care cases will still have preliminary hearings on violations of a valid court order and they will still have temporary custody hearings. Other than that, they will be able to, the court will be able to conduct hearings and issue orders of isolation or quarantine should those arise. And then there is a catch-all at the end that says any other matters that would require expeditious handling. And today at noon, the judges are going to meet with the sheriff and the DA and the public defender, and we are going to discuss things that might fall under this, any other matters that would require expeditious handling, so that we can work together to not overcrowd the jail is one goal there. The court is working to figure out ways that we could possibly make the courthouse, no public have to come to the courthouse for court hearings. We're working on ways that people could file PFA, PFSs outside the courthouse and we'll have to work on ways that we could conduct first appearances in a different manner. We currently have one jury trial, we're under one jury trial that is still active. It is in its fourth week, finishes its fourth week today. We're expecting to have closing arguments either this afternoon or Monday, so it should be finished up by mid next week at the latest. And once that occurs, there will be no jurors reporting to the courthouse. We have already stopped any new jurors from coming in because we will not be holding any jury trials until further notice. Judge Garing has asked if we could have one dedicated entrance rather than multiple entrances into the courthouse. That's the request that he sent down with me this morning and...
Is that possible? One entrance? That you know of? Okay. Okay, thank you, that's...
And so that is really what I have to report right now. As I said, we're having a noon meeting with the judges and the sheriff and the DA and the public defender, and we should know more about how things are going to progress after that.
Okay. That's a lot of information, Ellen.
Happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah, well, I don't know, there's a lot of information to digest, but it is for the record, so thank you. I don't see any questions.
Okay.
Appreciate it, Ellen.
Morning, Commissioners. Appreciate you having us come up today and speak to you. Just a couple of things. We are working with the court system, have been for the past week, as Ellen has explained. There's another meeting this afternoon or this morning that's going to take place. Some of the things that last Friday we started working on, right now we have only one area or one camera that we can do video conferencing on. We're in the process of having four more areas that are going to be set up to be able to do the video on, which will help cut down on first appearance of actually taking inmates across the street to the county building. So we'll have four total that we can do video appearance on. One other thing that last Friday, we were at about 1,684 inmates that we were housing. Today, we're at 1554, so there's already some things that are starting to take place to relieve some of the pressure that was being seen at the facility. One thing that I also want to make sure and reiterate again is we shut down visitation. So folks are not able to come in and do video visitation or to do visitation within the jail. They can still do video visitation from home, which has always been an option, using their own internet. Now, there is a cost to that. That's why most people come in to the facility, but as of right now, we have shut down that aspect of it, and then we're having other meetings today to take a look at what else we're going to do within the sheriff's office to limit the amount of exposure that is possible from a lot of people coming into the jail.
Just to clarify, Sheriff, face-to-face visits have been not a part of your operation for a long time.
It was shut down this week.
But, oh, it wasn't face-to-face?
Well, face-to-face isn't, this is over video.
Right.
Inside the facility where family members can come in, it's right there on the first floor, and it's over telephone and a video. That's been that way for six years now.
That's what I wanted to make sure the public realized that. You've had that, so now it's just the difference is they can't come to the facility.
They can't come to the facility.
But they can use their home.
Their home internet.
But it does have a cost to it.
That's correct.
Right. I don't see any other questions. Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, let's talk about the potential plan going forward. We've had a series of meetings this week with the leadership team, and we've included, just because of the nature of this phenomenon, we've included the Sheriff's Department into that conversation because of the complexity of the operation that he runs. Anytime you try to create a strategy or a plan moving forward, we have to make identifications of what people do inside this organization. The county is about 2,800 employees and roughly half of them are what we would call essential emergency workers. That's the obvious ones, 911, sheriff, paramedic, fire. But there are a number of people in this organization that are essential, people that take meals to elderly, people that have home visits with mentally ill. Those are emergency essentials where if we shut those operations down in any state of form, it will cause additional human suffering to what is already going on. So we spent considerable time, and we're still, this is very fluid and flexible, where we have identified three kinds of employees with the county, from emergency essential or essential emergency, positions that must report to their assigned work areas regardless of the weather and/or emergency conditions. These positions are unable to telecommute. Standard essential positions are those that may report to work to perform essential functions of the department and/or organization. These positions are able to telecommute. And then nonessential positions are those prevented from performing their duties at home or otherwise due to the nature of their position or due to the closure of a department. So staff met Wednesday and Thursday for several hours, and we bandied through a number of options or variations to how we could move forward, and a plan we settled on is the following. We are recommending to the commission that a majority of county facilities be closed to the public effective Monday through April the 5th. When we say closing, I would refer this maybe as a soft closing. We will still have staff here. There will still be telephone answering, there will still be email responding, there will still be internet types of work going on, and appointments can be made in emergency situations, face-to-face appointment level, appointments can be made. We've already instituted about a week and a half ago, pushing all employees who can work from home using computer to do so. That is all standard essential and nonessential employees are already doing that. We're going to continue to push that and push resources to get that done. Our emergency essential will have to continue to come to work to serve the people. They provide services that are so critical that we will have to continue to have those report to work. I want to talk a little bit about this later, but we're doing everything in our power right now to gain the kind of commodity of personal protective equipment so that when they're out doing their job, they have that available to them, and it's a struggle right now. Nonessential employees may continue reporting to work if appropriate distancing is available, and that's going to be up to department directors and elected offices. We can have the ability to relocate nonessential employees. For example, we have an HR employee that maybe would have to work by him or herself over in historic courthouse. We may have the ability to move them back over to this building to work in their nonessential role in this building so we can lock offices at the historic courthouse location. If nonessential employees are not able to work or cannot work from home, this group will be added to a pool for reassignment. And as this situation continues to unfold, we're seeing needs in some of the emergency operation areas, health department, for example, could use phone answers, data collectors, those kinds of things. So we would begin to reassign those types of nonessential personnel to those types of roles, or to the sheriff if he has use for them, or paramedics. There's House Bill 6201, the federal House bill, went into effect this week, and it's an interesting bill, and there are many moving pieces to it, all of which, or some of which, I should say, will impact county employees, it will impact employees across the country regarding benefits and sick leave and unemployment, et cetera. And we are researching that on the fly. Mike Fessinger is running point on that, and I'd like him to come up and talk about that House bill right now, and then we'll be available for questions.
Hello, Mike. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Fessinger, Assistant County Counselor. As Tom said, President Trump signed HR 6201, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, this Wednesday. Just some basics to get out of the way. It is set to go into effect 15 days after it was signed, which would be April 2nd. And also, there are required regulations to be promulgated by the Secretary of Labor, and those regulations are due to be released one week from the date the bill was signed. That would be March 25th. So many of the questions that you might have about this law will be expanded on by those regulations, so just right off the bat, I want to let you know that. There are two components of this law that will affect the rights that our employees have in light of the coronavirus situation. The first is the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act. It is one of the six components, it's one of the various components of Family First Coronavirus Response Act. It requires employers, us included, to provide two weeks of paid sick leave, paid at the employee's regular rate for the purpose of quarantining or to seek a diagnosis or preventative care for coronavirus. This paid time cannot exceed $511 per day or $5,110 total. So if someone's salary were to exceed that, and I don't know that we would have anybody, but if someone's salary were to exceed that, they'd be taking a pay cut pursuant to this paid leave. It also requires us to provide two weeks of leave. This type of leave paid at two-thirds the employee's regular rate to our employees who need to care for a family member if that family member needs to quarantine or to seek a diagnosis for preventative care for coronavirus. So we have two components to this first law as far as this two weeks of paid sick leave go. We have our employees themselves, if they need to take paid sick leave for their own health, that is paid at their full rate. If our employees need to take paid sick leave in order to care for a family member, that gets paid at two-thirds their rate. The Department of Labor will promulgate regulations that assist our staff in how to calculate those numbers, but right now, that's not specified in the law.
And that's effective April 2nd?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
All of our employees are immediately eligible for these rights. You do not have to have worked for us for any amount of time. That's atypical for a law like this, but this right, this benefit is available to all of our employees, full stop. There is, well, I guess full stop might have been the incorrect term because there is an exception to this. We've discussed how emergency responders and healthcare workers are necessary during this time, and the law provides that the Department of Labor regulations, which are set to be promulgated on the 25th, have the option of accepting our emergency responders and our healthcare workers from this law. That means that we do not have to offer those employees that leave benefit due to the necessity of their job. So that is the first component that I wanted to talk about today. The second component we need to talk about is the Emergency Family Medical Leave Act expansion. We all know the Family Medical Leave Act, it's a law from the early 90s. In its regular form, the Family Medical Leave Act requires that we provide up to 12 weeks of job-protected leave to employees who either have fallen ill and need time off or need to take care of a family member. In its normal form, the FMLA does not require that we pay that time, although obviously our employees have the option of using their own paid time during the FMLA. That's the law in its regular form. Now, I'm going to talk about the law in its expanded form. And again, this expanded form will take effect on April 2nd. There are now three new reasons under the expanded FMLA that one of our employees can take leave. The first is to adhere to requirements or recommendation to quarantine due to exposure to or symptoms of coronavirus. That's up to 12 weeks leave in order to quarantine. The second reason is to care for an at-risk family member who is adhering to a requirement or a recommendation to quarantine due to exposure to or symptoms of coronavirus. So we see that the law is similar in its expanded form. It's still used for the same purposes, but these purposes become focused on coronavirus. The third reason is the largest. It's to care for a child of an employee if the child's school or place of care has been closed or the childcare provider is unavailable due to coronavirus. We have many employees that are in childcare need right now because schools have closed. The expanded FMLA requires that we provide 12 weeks leave, job-protected leave, to these employees if they need to remain home to take care of their kids because their kids are out of school. But here's the largest difference between the FMLA in its regular form and the expanded FMLA. The weeks 2 through 12 in the expanded FMLA are paid, and they are paid by us and they are paid at two-thirds the salary of that particular employee. So we see how these two bills, or these two laws then lock together. We have the first two weeks of leave provided by the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, and then we have the subsequent weeks 3 through 12 leave paid, provided by the Expanded Family Medical Leave Act. And again, this goes into effect on April 2nd. Both of these laws go out of effect on December 31st, so they're only until the end of this year. The Expanded Family Medical Leave Act also contains a similar provision that allows the Department of Labor to promulgate a regulation that creates an exception for healthcare workers and emergency responders. So again, we have to wait for those regulations to come out to know for sure, but it's, at least in my view, likely that we will not be able to offer this to emergency responders and healthcare workers. So that's the long and short of it. I can stand for any questions you might have.
How about, is there a, for the public and the other businesses, is there a minimum number of employees that affects, or is that all?
I believe it's, in the private sector, it's businesses that have 500 employees and down, but the regulations may create exceptions for small businesses. We just don't know yet.
You said 500 or less?
Yes.
So these rules apply to employees, employers that are 500 or less?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, that's the private sector, doesn't it? All governments employees are involved.
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we fall under it under a separate provision because we're a government employer.
Okay. All right. Quite a bit. Thank you. So House Bill 6201?
Correct.
Is one bill, and then the expanded FMLA dovetails with it.
Well, so both of the, both of the subparts of the bill that I just discussed are contained within the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which is HR 6201.
Okay.
And there are other components to this bill that provide for other things, but these were the two that we chose to focus on for you this morning. The other components deal with unemployment benefits and things like that, and we'll get information to that soon as we need to.
Okay. How about any other questions so far, besides a lot? Okay. No questions. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
I guess my question would be, you know, how, how do you feel like this is going to affect our operations? And what are we do, what are we going to do for our emergency responders and healthcare workers?
Can we take the first question first? I think that in times like this, people have to understand that our level of, we have high standards of customer service in Sedgwick County, and in times like this, we will do the best we can, but I think to answer your question directly, it impacts the level of customer service we can give, expediency, friendly faces at a door. It will impact that. It'll impact that. Our base operations and how we continue to do government here, I think, are intact under what we're proposing today. We'll continue to do business, we'll continue to help people, we'll continue to provide services. So that's how I'd answer your first question. Your second question, you're talking to a lifelong emergency worker, a little bit, I don't know if disappointed is the word, but we are asking our emergency personnel to do an awful lot during this time. And I think we organizationally and my staff yesterday, along with the sheriff, talked about things we can do for our emergency workers, particularly after the April 2nd timeframe, to give some type of additional pay to these workers that have to do this kind of work, to help them with childcare costs that they didn't see coming, and just to keep them out there and give them some benefit as they continue to roll through what are going to be the next, a couple of tough months here for them. So I think we should, we should consider that, and I'll have something ready for you next week. We're modeling up financially certain types of packages that we could offer to emergency workers. The second thing I think that we owe our emergency workers is protective equipment, and we are doing everything we can today to get hand sanitizer, and things are basic, hand sanitizer, gloves, masks, protective equipment, and it is, as I mentioned before, it is a struggle right now. We have found this morning, I mean, it's, it's like we're all in the commodity business now. We're looking for trucks of hand sanitizer, pallets of masks or gloves, and we're finding some, we're having some luck, and we're getting some equipment in queue to come in so we can keep our workers staffed. So between those two things, I think that's the best we can do for our people that are out here on the streets dealing with this.
A challenge indeed. Thank you. Okay, could we recognize District Attorney Mark Bennett? We've been hearing from critical components, if you'd like to address us, where, how your world is going forward?
I figured if I walked up here, I'd get stuck.
I know, but you're very, you're very important for the community, Mark, as we've talked, so thank you for coming.
Yes, sir. Well, I was, I wanted to poke my head in here and kind of hear things in real time.
Right.
Just to give you a quick update on what we're up to. Obviously, we have two separate operations, the juvenile division as well as the downtown. Wednesday, Chief Justice Lueckert was given the authority by the Kansas Legislature to expand or delay deadlines, timelines that are normal throughout the criminal justice system, the justice system in general, civil as well. So statute limitations on a civil suit. Obviously, speedy trial and things that are normally have hard and fast deadlines within our system have been expanded. It's an impossibility for us to attend to those right now without a court session.
Right.
The larger concern that I had was, at some point, this is going to come to an end, whether that's six weeks from now, six months from now, whatever, whatever. And how do we then take, you know, we file somewhere in the neighborhood about 75 cases a week on average, so if that's 10 weeks, that's 750 cases now that have to get back into the system. How do we do that while attending to the speedy trial obligations we have with people that are already in the system? They'll get pushed back, I mean, those were some headaches that concerned me. And so this bill gives the Supreme Court Chief Justice the power to suspend those things for up to 150 days past the cessation of emergency declaration. So I'm breathing a lot easier than I was a week ago, and that helps. In terms of our obligations, then after that bill was passed, it actually signed into law yesterday at 11 o'clock, in anticipation of that, Justice Lueckert, Chief Justice Lueckert, it promulgated a set of rules, framework for the courts to begin working through, and at this time, essentially, it's essential hearings taking place, first appearances on people who've been arrested and in custody. And from that, we're going to talk to the judges, a meeting at noon. I'm going to join that meeting, I think, the sheriff as well, and see what our expectations are. There are folks who are in custody. Sheriff mentioned, I heard him say that we've already tried to work down a few of the folks that are in custody. Last week, the sheriff provided my office a list of everyone who was in custody in Sedgwick County. Some of these folks are there for, they're waiting in Bedlam-Larney State Hospital for a competency evaluation. We're literally, it is almost impossible to change that once it's been done. There's a decision years ago that, once that bell has been rung, you can't unring it until they get to Larney. So those folks are kind of stuck. But there are a lot of people who were in on traffic offenses, and maybe the judge imposed a 30-day sentence, and so I had my traffic chiefs go through and look at every case and found people who, you know, maybe they had done 10 or 15 days on a 30-day sentence, enough, good enough, let them out. Public safety risk, but the risk to, at the end of the day, Jeff needs space in that jail. If the virus gets in there, the only mechanism he has to attend to that is space, so that he can have some place to put people who are sick and, you know, compromised, et cetera, and quarantine them from the rest. And he cannot do that in his max capacity. So we have identified, I think over, to do the math, it was over 120, 130 people that we've figured out a way to get out over the last five, six days. We're going to continue to look at that. We're going to meet with the judges today, so that noon, to see if there's anything we can do for people who are awaiting sentencing, for instance, or if, there's not a lot of options we have, but we're trying to be as specific about what we're doing here and not painting in broad strokes. We get down to each individual case and make sure we're attending to each case the best we can. The defense bar, you know, they're in the same situation, the defenders have gone home. They have two, two at the office who are answering emails and things like that. Meantime, we're going to continue to work our cases... Meantime, we're going to continue to work our cases with attorneys. It's, luckily, it's a kind of a job that they can go home and do, take their files home and work their cases, communicate by email with defense counsel, come up with cases that can be ready to, you know, to be worked out. But this is going to be a slog for the next, frankly, probably for the next year. And meantime, we're trying to make sure that I don't send, I've got people who have highly specialized, you know, skills, support staff attorneys, et cetera, and I don't want them to go home and not get paid and, and give up and try to find another way to, you know, feed their families. And so not only are we identifying the folks whose jobs are fairly easy to do from home, like I said, luckily, that's a lot of my people, but the folks who don't have a job that is quite as easily done, journal entry clerks. I mean, we've talked about that in this setting many times. You want clerks who can get those journal entries churned out quickly so they can get people processed through the jail, et cetera. Well, there's no hearings, there's no journal entries. So I don't want to just send those ladies home and go, seen in a few months now. That's obviously informed by what Mr. Fessinger just said a moment ago, that there's going to be, those are things to be determined, but anyway, I don't want to overstate my welcome here, but we've been working on this for the better part of a week, 10 days, and I think we're getting to the point where we've got a plan moving forward, so.
Thank you for your, your hard work with the other DAs in the state on the speedy trial and some of the reasonable things that, and thanks to the, to our Topeka legislators and the governor for pushing that through and signing. So those are helpful, obviously.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Okay. Any other questions for Mark? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, Chairman, if there are no other questions, we'd like to move forward with this if so fit or modify as the will of the commission sees fit.
Okay. We've had a couple of questions. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just make a quick comment, and I do have a couple of questions as well, but number one, I want to say I appreciate the, the legis, the legislature for 6201. I think that's good policy. I think that the extended FMLA and 6201, my first thought would, would be what's the budget impact? And I, and actually, as I'm thinking about that, I think that doesn't really change our budget forecast at all. What we're got, probably really talking about is the potential loss of services, but the dollars are built already into the budget we passed last year. The only exception to that would be if we, if we recognize our emergency personnel that have to come to work, that are dealing with other issues, and I appreciate your, your thought on that, and I look forward to more discussion about how to be sensitive to those special needs for that particular number of our employees that are emergency, that are going to be able to do some of these exercises, 6201 or, or the FMLA, perhaps maybe the way other employees would be able to. So I think that's a very good, really good idea there, there, manager. I am, I am curious about when people do come to the courthouse or if they have questions, we've not really talked about, how do they, if they're concerned about deadlines or, or paying a fine or normal business they would have in this courthouse, how are they supposed to find out what they should do? Is there a number they can call to find out what their proper response would be?
Well, all of the offices inside this building will maintain some presence, so there's phone numbers they would call, who they would normally call with a question of whatever their matter is inside of this building. 211 is being reserved now for COVID-level questions, so that's not the number we want them to call. If they have specific county business that they want to discuss, paying a fine, coming to the treasurer, going to see the clerk, we're going to ask that they call those offices, talk to someone there, and if they come to this building, they'll be allowed access. Our security will stop them. We are going to ask questions regarding their health, which we have to do now, and then we will allow them into the building to take care of whatever the course of matter they have to take care of. Depending on what courts, the DA and the sheriff decide today at that meeting, that they're going to have, we may revisit this next week, but that's the plan as it stands today, right now.
My next question, so you already answered that, I think that's excellent. One of the things that's really timely right now is the property appraisal appeals process is really just getting started. So if someone wants to appeal their property tax, let's say their property value, is there any, any, any grace built into that process? I'm not aware of anything, but I think we ought to talk about that.
Okay. Our appraiser, Mark Clark, is here. I'll have him come speak to that, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mark Clark. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Clark, County Appraiser. As you know, in the back of the value notice, people have a, an option to choose either an in-person appeal meeting or they can do a phone meeting. And we have opted to contact all the people that have requested in-person meetings, and we have switched those to phone meetings. And they have been very, very appreciative of it. There have been a few that have had some concerns. We've dealt with those, and we are backfilling those towards the deadline. However, the state has not extended the, the appeal deadline. And I can tell you that they probably will not. I do have the option of filing for an extension. At this time, I do not plan on doing that because last year, we had a total of, at last year, at this time, we had 1,796 appeals. Altogether, we had over 4,000, but currently, we only have 2528, 2,528. We do know that the tax representatives will be bringing some in. We've already talked to them, and they want to do phone appeals. So this, at this time, does not appear to be a problem. And anybody who wants to give us evidence, they are flooding our email system, and we've talked to ITS, Wes Ellington and so forth. They've expanded our inboxes. That evidence is coming in. We're getting appraisals, pictures, all kinds of, of information. So that's being filed and scanned and logged, and as we're calling, we can pull that stuff up and discuss it with the property owner.
All right. I need to think about that a little bit, a little bit more, but I do appreciate your answer. That is very helpful to understand kind of where we are at the moment, so.
I can tell you that the Director of PVD, we had a conference call the other day. Large counties, in fact, all 105 counties were represented, but all the large counties have opted for phone appeals, and it looks like the other counties are going to head in that direction.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all my questions for now. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Howell. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Manager, just, just a few questions for you in regards to the questions about tax payments and stuff. I had another call today with David Harper with the Department of Revenue to ask some questions about, about some of the extensions. I know that Treasurer Kazire is also trying to work with the Department of Revenue. A lot of people assume that the tag office is ran by the county, but it is actually a state department about, because I've had a person ask me about their 60-day tag that's going to expire, title work, stuff like that. So I don't see anyone from there today, but I don't think they have a, I, I was talking to Treasurer Kazire last night, video text, and I don't think they have answers to that. So things are operating as normal.
Let me, I, I have had some correspondence with Randy Bargdell and Linda this morning.
Oh, good, good.
Let me read you. Randy has a, and Linda have a plan in place regarding placing a drop box outside of the police screening area here. They are monitoring the tag site locations with allowing only a few people in at a time, pushing people to all of their electronic mechanisms, and that's the way they would prefer to stay in for right now, until something else changes. So they do have a plan, they're working through it. We've talked about extensions of a lot of things, property tax bill, May 10th, March tag renewal, what Commissioner Howell has asked regarding evaluations, and can we set those aside? We're, we're discussing those right now, but all of those authorities fall within the state realm right now, so we'll need some help from the state if we want to move that direction.
Yeah. Another question, I see my friend Judge Jurney's in the room, so good, good to see, Your Honor. He had brought up a, a few points to me the other day. I think most of the issues have been addressed with no more jury trials, not having the jury pool here, limiting, he was talking about limiting the people coming in the building, but also for going to the single entrance, like Judge Gearing says. You responded to the chairman that that's something we could probably, we could probably handle. So just trying to limit the flow here, but for our security, making sure they have gloves, mask, more hand sanitizer. It sounds like you've addressed that, so I hope that answers some of the questions that Judge Jurney had, because to his credit, he's been calling for weeks, knowing that this was going to be coming, so he was, he was definitely on top of that. Another question would be, I thought Adrian might be here today, but I don't, I don't know.
She had a conflicting meeting, or?
Yeah, that does not surprise me. Just, just a few questions. I've had, even Dion Luffa from the Eagle called me yesterday, but just a, a few questions, just so that, that people have faith in what we're doing here at the county when it comes to responding to COVID-19 and some of the testing, obviously, from the time that I had talked to Dion until last night, there was our first confirmed case in that window. Do we have a number of individuals in Sedgwick County that we know that have been tested for the coronavirus?
Let me have Tim for that. We had that exact discussion this morning, so.
Thank you. So these are the, these are the questions that I'm sure are all being asked, and I want the public to know we have a very capable, competent, effective, and responsive health department, which we do. And I just want to make sure that the public's getting that out there. So, Tim, if you would answer that question about how many Sedgwick County residents have been tested?
Good morning, Commissioner Tim Coffin, Deputy County Manager. The Health Department has screened dozens and dozens of individuals. They have had 20 individuals that met the criteria to be tested. They have tested, and they have, everyone that has been tested by the Health Department has tested negative. We do not yet have a number on how many people have been screened in the county because there are screenings that happen across, across the healthcare spectrum. So individual doctor's offices may screen if they have the testing materials.
Right.
The biggest issue right now in our community is having access to the testing medium, and that is spread across the, the healthcare continuum that we have in, in, all the, all of the healthcare providers in the community.
Outside of Sedgwick County, Ascension, and HCA, is there anyone else that has test kits or capability to get them?
If an individual doctor's office had those materials in advance before this epidemic hit us, it's possible that they were able to conduct some tests.
But you haven't heard of any?
There are limited sporadic things happening across the community. Again, the, and I think all of the healthcare providers are being very strict, following the, the KDHE guidelines about who's eligible to be tested, and that includes having a temperature of 100.4 degrees or greater and having breathing issues, restricted breathing, shortness of breath, that sort of thing. So if people don't meet those criteria, then the healthcare providers are reserving the test materials for people who meet that criteria. For example, the individual that has been identified as a presumptive positive here in Sedgwick County was tested by their, their physician who happened to work at a different clinic here in town, not at the Health Department. They were, they were tested, they called their primary care doctor, talked about the symptoms that they were experiencing. The, their doctor encouraged them to come in and conducted a test, sent that test material to the lab, the KDHE lab in Topeka. It was tested and that confirmation came back. KDHE tracks all of those test results, and so we know about the, the test results that we have submitted. We also know about the positives that come back in our community, because as soon as a positive test, presumptive positive test is identified, the Health Department is notified, and then their EPIs go to work to track those contacts and, and begin the process that they're very good at doing and trying to make sure that they do everything they can to contain this or any other disease spread.
Okay. So, so KDHE is compiling all that information from everyone, so we're not, so what we know is we have tested 20 individuals.
We, we've tested seven, but we screened 20 people who have, have been either referred or showed up at the West Central Clinic. We're, again, encouraging people to talk to their primary care doctor. We have screened seven individuals. The results on all of those have come back as negative.
Okay. Thank you. And, and the, the last question about this is, we've seen a, a small outbreak in Johnson County, so they obviously have access to tests up there. Do you feel like we're getting as much attention in testing supplies as Johnson County is?
We certainly hope so. We are, we have submitted a number of different requests to KDHE and through the Kansas Department of Emergency Management to, to get additional testing materials. We've put out a call to local healthcare providers to see if any of them had materials that they could give to the Health Department so that we could do additional or more wide-scale testing. We've seen some of that start to trickle in. We're continuing to hope that more of those materials come in, but again, it's a nationwide shortage.
Absolutely. And, and I've talked to the CEO of Wesley this week. I know he's been in contact with Tom, and I, and I assume you as well. Congressman Roger Marshall and his staff have reached out to me, and I know other, other members up here, Congressman Nessus. So we have people working at the federal level and the state level between Dan Hawkins and Susan Wagle and their staff. So I know at the state level, we've been trying to get them. I was just wondering if we had any indication if they were paying more attention to Johnson County, because what the chairman and I were talking about yesterday was, well, yeah, if you don't have enough testing supplies, then there are no confirmations because nobody was tested. And we know we had at least one person in our community that has it, might be more, but you don't know if you don't get tested. So that, that's the concern that I think we're all feeling as the Board of Health, but we just want to make sure that the community knows, that our Health Department knows what they're doing, and we have this crisis as under control as a pandemic can be. So, and I, and I appreciate your staff and, and Tom's steady leadership on this. And I know I kind of got off course because I think this plan is fantastic, but th, those are the questions that I just have random people ask me, how many cases we have, how many people have been tested? Just very, very basic questions that, that I'm glad the media's here today so they at least can hear about those numbers.
Absolutely. We, and we continue to, again, try and turn over, I think Adrian has said a number of times, we're turning over every stone to try and identify additional materials, and we are happy that we've, we've seen some local healthcare providers provide us with some materials, and we'll continue to do so.
And to her credit, she's answered every question that, that I've ever had, to the, to the best of her knowledge, as have you. So anyway, thank you for the time, Tim and Tom. Those were, those were all my questions, so.
Tim, wait, Tim, wait. Explain what an EPI is for everybody then.
I'm sorry, an epidemiologist. They're trained scientists who are skilled both in, in scientific practices and in investigation techniques. And so they're going to follow back, they're going to track back from a particular case and talk to their contacts and make sure that they're identifying where that disease could have possibly spread or come from.
So they do the contact to the, to the person that's affected and then?
And then their contacts.
Their contacts, so.
Correct.
And that happened yesterday very well.
Yes, sir.
Right away, when we were notified, so that was comforting. Another question from Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Since we're talking about testing, there's been a lot of questions about drive-through clinics and where are we at with that? I know that we have to collect the supplies first, but I'd like for you to address that, if you would.
We do have tentative plans for the logistics to do it, to conduct a drive-through clinic. We are continuing to hold off until we have materials that would allow us to have enough to do, that would create enough materials that would give us the value or a benefit from doing a drive-through clinic. We're continuing to pursue all materials that we would need to do that.
Are we waiting till we get a certain number of materials in order to open that? Do we expect like a big flood? And we want to be able to help folks? I mean, what is the threshold? How quickly do you think that we'll get there?
We're hoping that we'll see some additional materials come through the emergency management system and maybe even the national stockpile next week that would allow us to possibly put together a drive-through clinic either late next week or early the following week. Again, dependent upon materials being available. And the other thing to, to remember is that we've got healthcare staff that are now screening folks on the phone. We've asked people if they feel like they may be at risk to call 211. 211 is going to conduct some initial screening questions. Folks that pass that level of, of screening would then be passed on to someone at the Health Department that would screen. And so we know that the number of people that request that screening, it's a smaller percentage of them that meet those testing criteria, and then again, a much smaller number of folks who test positive.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Hey, Tim, one of the things that I heard on one of the conference calls we had the other day was expanded telemedicine, especially to help the seniors. They're going to waive all costs of telemedicine, I believe, for seniors. They're going to waive all costs of telemedicine, I believe, for seniors. Have you got any details on that? And do you know which of our medical providers here in Sedgwick County can use telemedicine? Which ones have the capability? From what I understood, by you can just use your cell phone and call into any provider that has the capability of doing that.
Some of the, the rules have been relaxed and some have not, and I think one of the things that has been a limiting factor right now is having secure connections, because not all communication tools are going to be secure enough to transmit medical information. One of the, the leading tools is a WebEx, and we've tried to greatly expand. The departments in the county that do direct care service, seniors and others, we have started to expand our ability to do telephonic screening and, and televideo screening. One of the challenges is the, the capability of the WebX network, because there are healthcare providers all across the country that are doing that. Our Aging Department has started to do some televideo screenings that they traditionally did face-to-face. Folks at Calm Care are starting to implement televideo and telephonic screening rather than face-to-face when it's appropriate. I do not have information that would tell you how many different healthcare providers in the community have that capability or the ability to do that. I know that it is being expanded across the country and across our community. Healthcare providers, where it fits, fits the model of healthcare that they deliver, they are trying to, again, limit the number of face-to-face interactions and use televideo. And I think that's an important question for anyone who has a healthcare question. Call your provider and ask them if they're able to see them through televideo rather than an in-person appointment.
I got one final comment. We all received emails that said that the Red Cross is extremely short of blood supplies right now, because they've canceled, I think, nineteen or twenty blood drives. We want to make sure we get the word out to the public that the Red Cross is still in dire need of, of blood. Anything that anyone can do to help with that, contact the Red Cross, find out how that they're going to be able to, to schedule you in to give blood. Thank you. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. I think we've had a lot of information. Thank you, all of the departments, for, for attending this special meeting, and thanks for the, it's really helpful for us, and I'm sure it's helpful for the public. So with that, Tom, I, you're wanting, you're wanting us to, your recommended action is to approve your, your emergency plan as, as presented?
Yes, sir.
Unless you have any other closing statements?
I do not. We have an eleven o'clock, just FYI, we have an eleven o'clock video that we're going to do every day.
Correct.
Monday through Friday, right now, may stretch that into weekends, depending on situation, but we will have a video come out today as soon as we can regroup after this meeting and get in front of the cameras, so.
Commissioner Cruz has.
Thank you. I just want to say one final thing. You know, I've received, this morning, I woke up with four Facebook messages, I had two voicemails. I think we're all just really feeling a lot of pressure from a lot of folks, and it's really important to remain calm and just keep a level head. Being panicked, having fear is only going to make matters worse. So I just, I hope that people will understand that, that we are working day and night on this. We, we are happy to answer any questions, but please, please remain calm and, and please be patient with me as I get back to everybody who has kind of asked me questions. So that's just the main thing, is I just really want people to, to remain calm during this, this situation.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner O'Donnell?
And, and with that, I'd just like to thank our partners in the media. You guys have done a wonderful job of keeping the public updated on this crisis as it's been unfolding. So as Commissioner Cruz says, we, we can't respond to every single message and call that we get immediately, but the media's doing a great job of, of covering this virus, and I even saw the Wichita Eagle took your pay, your paywall down so that anybody can get any of this coverage for free, so you don't even need, you don't even need to subscribe, you don't have to be a subscriber to that. So that, I think that's been a, a big help as well. And like Commissioner Dennis mentioned about the Red Cross, I was able to go over the yesterday, I talked to Shannon Wedge on the phone. They have a great streamlined operation. You go in, they take your temperature just to make sure that you're not experiencing a fever, and that was the longest eight seconds of my week, just waiting for that temperature to come on. I was like, oh, good, it was perfect. But that, you can also just set up, I call their one-eight-hundred number, but anyway, I know they would appreciate it, and I misspoke yesterday when I said it was nineteen, it was actually forty-eight in Shannon Wedge's region, that they had to cancel forty-eight different blood drives. So we'll be having a shortage real soon if we don't continue to get those donations, and the concern for that will be people that have medical problems outside of the coronavirus, people that, babies that are born that need blood transfusions is a primary issue, and then anybody that has an accident or any other type of issue where they need blood. So we, we have to continue to figure out ways to, to keep the Red Cross full. So thank you for reminding me of that, Commissioner Dennis. That was, that was a great experience yesterday. But Commissioner, or Chairman Meitzner, if you're ready, I'd, I'd make a motion that we approve the recommended action of the manager.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the service delivery plan as presented on the changes. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item. There is none, so thank you all for being here. We stand adjourned.